I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:05 PM. You can all stand and join me with the pleasurable evening. I have pleasurable evening.
...to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you. The first thing we're gonna do tonight is we're going to swear in our new or returning members. I got Kathy, Sarah, and Mr. Wallace come down to the podium. Or you can stand there for ordering. All right. Sam.
Wallace is in here. How long you been here?
He was thinking that was Wallace.
Oh, sorry, yes, Dale.
Oh, what did he say? He said it was Wallace.
All right, I'm gonna read through this, so I will just go in order here. I, Kathy Brummer, Dale Bray, and Sarah Hendricks do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter, and Code of ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs. And I will safely discharge the duties of a claimed commission member to the best of my abilities. All right, the next order of business is the motion to open the floor for nominations for the chairperson. I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to nominate Craig Owen.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Let someone move to close the floor. Second. With someone motion for a roll call vote. Second. Brummer? Yes. Hendricks? Yes. Conley?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Asherson?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace is not here. Mr. Bray?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations Craig Owen.
Thank you, my friend.
If I could have you stand and raise your right hand, I will give you your oath. I, Craig Owen, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter, and Code of ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs. And I will safely discharge the duties of claimed commission chairperson to the best of my abilities.
The motion to open the floor for nominations of the vice chairperson.
Any motion to nominate Craig Conley?
I'm sorry. Wait. Here you go.
Yes, sir. I heard that. I have a motion to...
Yeah, we're motioning to open the floor first.
Oh, that's right. Moving the subject.
Okay, so now the floor is open.
Nominate Lisa Asherson.
First of all, sir, let's do, uh, Clint Conley. We have a second on that. Okay? For Lisa, the second on that. Whoever... Motion to close now, please.
Right?
Second.
Right. Should we do a roll call on that?
Brummer?
Yeah, question person.
Oh, yes. Just a question. Do either one of you guys nominate? I guess it would be my question to either one of you before I make a vote. I mean... You don't care either one way or the other?
No, I don't particularly want to.
Okay. I just, I would like to find out before I say yes or no to either one of you.
Who are we voting on, please? The two candidates are Lisa Ash- Asherson and Clint Conley. Well, which one are we voting on first? Clint Conley. No. Okay, no.
I can see where this is going.
Okay. Clint?
No. No?
No.
No. No.
Lisa Asherson? Ms. Brummer? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
I fully, uh...
Hi. Congratulations Lisa.
No?
If you could raise your right hand.
I, Lisa Asherson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City of Cedar Springs, and the Code of ordinances. And I will safely discharge the duties of claimed commission chairperson to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. So now our roll call. Ms. Asherson?
Here.
Mr. Bray?
Here.
Ms. Brummer?
Here.
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Welcome. Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Wallace said he probably will not be here, so we will excuse him. Owens is here. City Planner Carmen Avatini, this is her bill. Try to get out of here before the snow hits. It's got a long ride. Please take a look at the minutes from our December 6 meeting and the motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion. May I? Are you being sorry about Ms. Brummer? Ms. Bray. Or Ash.
Any discussion on those December 6 minutes? All favor of approval, aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Okay, so thank you. I'd like to move the approval of our agenda for tonight, but a couple of modifications. First of all, under new business, we are looking at both the special land use and a site plan review of the same location. Think that logically it'd make more sense if we flipped those and approved the, or looked at the special land use first, and then the site plan review after that since it's contingent upon that. And then also, under old business, last month we tabled a motion on the exception of the resignation letter of Sherry Foster, and so we need to revisit that. So under old business, we could put that under item A. Now, motion, is there support for that?
Right. Second.
Any other discussion on the agenda? All favor aye?
Aye.
All approved, no? Our bids just... Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Public comments? Anybody that would like to share a tender warning with us, please step up to the podium, and we are all ears. All right, saying none, we will move on to our scheduled hearing. Public hearing for special land use. I need a motion to open that hearing for 299 West Cherry Street.
Two. Second.
All favor aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, Ms. Avatini, you wanna raise your, uh, your...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. She had a letter dated December 29, a special land use review for the Cedar Springs Manufacturing Warehouse Edition. In general, the special land use criteria deals with the operation, potential impacts of a particular use. In this case, it is an extension to an existing building. It's a warehouse addition which will warehouse products for the manufacturing operation, and there's really nothing about the use itself that would have an impact on the surrounding area, and so should be compatible with the particular area that it's in too. So, to kind of go through this quickly, it's, um, there's a recommendation for approval conditioned upon site plan approval, which is the next item that we're dealing with. So, I've gone through it quickly. Given questions, it's pretty straightforward, so you have the answers.
Any questions from Ms. Avatini? You also have in your packet a letter from Mr. Womack. Mr. Womack, any recap of that you'd like to offer?
Nothing additional. I just encourage you, Ms. Avatini, to...
Did the zoning administrator decide whether that was industrial or mixed use?
I didn't hand it back to the materials. They permitted me to do so. I did review a number of zoning administration maps to see if the area changed. We just don't have a high enough resolution to let us know. I did add a couple of maps that I put together in the packet, which indicates that it appears that there is the parcel from the north which swoops down, it appears to be I-1 industrial section. And the one from the south, which is where the CS building is currently, appears to be MU. You just can't tell. And so, out of an abundance of caution, I brought it to you guys for the special land use. And that's the only reason I wrote the letter in favor of it, is because honestly, you can't tell. And if you can't tell, you don't want to slice off your nose to spike the fact.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so since this is a public hearing, if there's anybody that would like to address this body on this issue, either for it or against it, this would be your opportunity to do so.
Mr. Wallace, I got one question. Michael, is that gray area that's in there, is that Elm Street that was abandoned by the city how many years ago? Is that why is that gray area between, between the industrial north and the plant in the south?
I don't know. I know, that's not the answer you want. What I think it is, is I think there might have been some spot zoning in the past, and for whatever reason, that parcel in the north was spot zoned as industrial, and the parcel that the CS building is currently on is zoned MU. I don't know the history of that, because it makes sense for those both to be industrial.
Motion to close our public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. Support? All favor aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? All right, so in our new business then, because we switched those special land uses now A, we're looking at so... Do you believe that all the information from you, what is your question?
I make a motion that we approve the special land use for Cedar Springs Manufacturing Warehouse Edition at 141 West Cherry Street.
Mr. Bray, just wanted to comment today if you could make a condition upon site plan approval, just like one hour.
Right, thank you. I will make that motion.
All right, the motion of support, all favor aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Okay, so special land use request has been moved contingent on our site plans, so site plan for that site, Ms. Avatini, please leave a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. She had a letter dated January 5. This is the revised site plan review for the warehouse addition. I've been working with the applicant's consultant and going through revisions to the site plan. In fact, I have received today a lighting plan, revised lighting plan with all the items, and I found them to be satisfactory. But I'll go through the, uh, through the individual items here. First one, lot consolidation, because there's two lots involved, and we have to consolidate them into ones, so it's the same property. Really, the two, I think, outstanding issues that you're gonna have to make a determination on are, the ordinance requires curving and paving of drives and parking lots. And, and you're not the only community that I run into this with. I've run into this in pretty much every community I work in. And the thing you want to be careful of is that if you find this acceptable, because it's an industrial property, you think there's a rationale, and I'm sure the applicant will discuss this in more detail with you, you have to have a reason for why you would allow them to use gravel and curving. And one of the reasons that I see in other communities, one of the primary reasons, is if they have heavy equipment that would break up in either pavement or even heavy duty concrete. And that's one of the reasons that I see when I do see gravel used like that. They obviously do have their, their drive proposing is pretty tight on the property line, which would also be an issue for them with the curving. So that's something you may want to have them address after I'm finishing my review letter. That's, that's really the main thing that you have to make a determination on. Parking lot landscaping, they were required to have your interior parking lot landscaping for the new spaces to the rear of the building. That really didn't seem to make much sense, and I recommended to them that they put their landscaping around the detention, on the side of the detention, kind of the side of the building, facing the trail. It made a lot more sense. And, and they did that, and so it's the landscaping, I think, works pretty well. They've got all the required number of landscaping plantings in there. Building addition materials, they are, they are going to use a metal building, and the only thing I've requested here is that they use, they have the color of the metal building complement that of the existing building. And they, and they've already put the foundation plantings in there. They do have enough required parking on site per the ordinance. And once again, all their architect submitted lighting plan today that indicates that they'll, they can meet the requirements with full cutoff fixtures, LEB fixtures, mounted on the building and on poles which are 20 feet high. And their photometric grid shows that it's, it's acceptable, and that can handle a lot of spill up or glare. And then last but not least, as we put on all site plan reviews, it has to be conditioned upon review and approval from other applicable departments and agencies. So with that, we're recommending approval of the revised site plan for the Cedar Springs Manufacturing Company Warehouse Edition at 141 West Cherry Street, conditioned upon the following items. Number one, consolidation of the two lots. Number two, planning commission determination regarding the failure to provide curving and pavement for the parking lot and drives as required by ordinance. Number three, that the color of the metal on the warehouse addition complement the color of the existing building. Number four, if you want to keep it in there, that's fine, they've already provided that. It's submission of a lighting plan, meaning ordinance requirements for administrative review and approval. You can drop that off if you'd like. And then the last one, review and approval from other applicable departments and agencies. Just one other note too, they are providing stormwater detention on site too, which makes obviously the engineer happy. And so it's a, it's a good addition, nice addition for the company, and we think they've done a good job on it. You just have to decide on the parking lot and the curving, if that's the main outstanding item.
Any questions from Ms. Avatini? All right, I don't know which one, if you guys that are overseeing this might want to address some of those comments as well.
Mr. Paul Henderson, the firm's name and associates. It's the engineer that prepared the plan. Pretty straightforward project. The, the issues that Ms. Avatini brought up regarding curving and the gravel, you know, if you look at the site plan, there's an existing gravel area adjacent to the light pine trail. So somewhere we need to make a transition from the paved parking lot and back to that gravel area, so, you know, it's a fine desire to have that gravel driveway extend to the existing gravel area. And if the curving, you know, if the curving in the ordinance is proposed to protect landscaping, you know, circle the entire, the parking lot and the paved area with curving, there's only landscaping adjacent to the light pine trail, you know, it's, it's all money that needs to be expended to develop the property, and I don't know if there's something we can do to help save money, but it'd be helpful.
Just a point of clarification, I realized when I looked a little, I did make it clear that the curving was for the whole, you know, the whole thing, and the, um, the gravel was just for that extension of the drive. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't confuse that, because now that I'm keeping mine, maybe confuse that too. So, just wanted to make sure it's just that, that drive along the trail side and the curving is the only issue that applies to the, the old road side later, and that's the rule.
Yeah, the great example, we're paving all, all the accessways and parking areas and maneuvering lanes for the trucks, but we're just making one gravel connection there.
The gravel portion is just, um, right on the, which would be the northeast corner of the building?
That's correct.
If I may also, the curving on the east side, I, I'm the one that does the brush hocking up and down there. If you haven't been over there, that's rather steep. And if we put curving on that side, all it's gonna do is increase the steepness to the point that I can't mow that anymore. The other aspect of gravel coming down from the north, down those two ends, we've worked very hard, required property from Guss, so we do not have to break some ice, et cetera, et cetera, up around Cherry Street, where we're already gonna be increasing our traffic that way. And so by putting this, we'll tie together gravel drive on the east side of it, that helps to cut down on traffic from the, from Maple Street, past the brewery, past the library, past all the things that go on that side of it also, right? And then our paint trucks are gonna come in between Guss or construction man, or Cherry Street. So that's kind of the cause behind that. I said on, on the, on the trail side, to have the curve right there is gonna make it difficult to, that's, that's really steep. That's very, very steep. And we work hard to try to keep that trimmed up and looking nice all the way out to the building, so that's kind of the cause on that side of it.
And like you said, it's just extending the gravel.
That's right. Yeah, there's an existing gravel area that I'm not worried is gonna make the connection completely. Just surround the entire pavement area with curving, this seems like a, you know, excessive cost, you know, there's no landscaping that was in lawn around the other side of the parking driveways.
Any other questions, Mr. Henderson?
Have they agreed to, um, make the color of the building the same as the other?
I don't believe that would be a problem.
Okay.
Pete wants paint, though.
That's an acceptable condition. Either the match would be complimentary to this thing.
Right, yeah, it's a compliment.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I'm probably...
Any questions?
I, I do have a question. This, this, I'm having a hard time saving my head. What's this gravel area being used for next to the trail?
The gravel area now is gonna be used for parking, but it's not going to be, because parking lot's gonna be on the north side of the building. However, it does give us another exit aspect for cars to come in that side of it rather than coming up along Cherry Street.
Does it go all the way down the end of the building to Cherry?
Yeah, it already runs the whole length, in fact, it already goes all the way back to the abandoned edge of Elm Street already.
Just because looking at this map, I just didn't see that. It looks like it gets too narrow here.
This, well, actually, this is a bit of a gravel right here, and I'm still looking back to there, so there's a, a curve.
You know, I guess I misinterpreted the size of the trail there. I see now that it's actually extending further out, so...
However, that's just gonna be an access for your employees to come in and out.
Yeah, it makes more sense to me now, just having looked at the map in a lower resolution than what I thought I meant that I had before, I just didn't see this differentiation here. But it makes more sense to me now that you can actually access it with a car. So it's not your intention to actually use this for semi truck traffic or anything?
No.
Michael, that's gonna go on the west side of the building between Guss building and ours. That's why I figured I just oughta ask the question for everybody.
The trucks would have to maneuver through the parking lot.
How long is this gravel area? I mean, is this blocks? This is several blocks, isn't it?
No. The gravel area over there?
Can you show us on that?
The gravel area already, although it's one block, goes from Cherry Street up to...
Might, might gravel here, but it's not.
This is the only gravel area we're talking about right here. This is paved. This is all paved.
And that is what we want.
You want to continue that, or the cherry?
You just want, he wants it for the one that's there.
Yeah, right here is the only post.
What is curved?
Not the usual, correct.
And where would the parking lot be?
We're paving, we're paving everything else where trucks will go, and we're...
They had a curve off for not being able to...
Right, and the same as about a curve all the way around here.
Um, most of the area, the way they're, I think, is gonna come off Cherry Street. Coming here.
You guys want to see a real pass? He'll come down and stuff.
Well, that is where this area is, you know, Guss would be here, but...
This portion, I need to review around this portion. I just want to be sure, you know, if it's a couple of good numbers.
Yeah, I can have that. I was making sure. I was on.
The question we brought up, what is the proposed, how much is the total gravel? So, all ready here? This is all, this is the party engine, it's gravel, all the, all the years, years ago. I was having a hard time, but there you go, and I went and said, this year, I'm not all right, I'm out. Went as far as that, exactly, so I could kind of visualize the goal.
All right. Any other questions from, you know, Ms. Anderson? Pardon? Any other questions from Ms. Anderson?
Right, Jim, like, we'll just, as a little guidance, if you agree with the, which obviously the, the gravel connection is a lesser issue, if you agree to the, the curving, I would recommend that you put the rationale in there for it, at this point, I, yeah, it just, once again, because you'll have other requests in the future, and you need something by which to judge each application by.
So, everybody good with that on the, the curving, not requiring them to have it because of the complications that it's gonna create? It's outlined by the affidavit. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan, conditioned on the consolidation of the two lots, and making note that the affidavit does not have to provide curving because of the complications that affidavit has already outlined for us, and also with the condition that the, the metal on warehouse addition be complimentary to the existing building, that we have the way taken care of, and then the review and approval from other applicable departments and agencies.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Any sign, any submit to be put in there?
There are no proposed signings.
Just so that it's not used for any trucks or anything, it's used for employees only.
Part of which area?
The gravel. Doesn't matter. If somebody ever sees that there's pavement going back there.
Couldn't they do it?
Absolutely. I'm just wondering if it would be worth while to have a signed employee on there or something.
Each side. No trucks on either side.
Yeah.
This is all, I can't mow it, a semi truck. He can't make the turn getting out of there.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, we have support, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, under old business, if you'll remember, in December, we have a letter of resignation from Terry Foster. And there was a potential discussion of the city council maybe changing a rule so that a non-resident could be on the planning commission. And so, we made a motion to table that resignation letter. However, the city council has, they're the final authority, and they decided to not change those rules. So, we need to revisit that. So, Mr. Hopkins, you made the original motion on that, so would you have to do that?
My motion is going to be overturned.
That's it, yeah, well, that came up with it, to accept her resignation.
Sorry, my motion is not overturned?
Well, you did motion to accept her. We're already, it's already back now. You put it back on the table for us.
All right, so make the motion to accept her resignation.
Okay.
All favor eye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Mr. Terry, thank you. All right. But I'll, you, I think it's in our packet, this training here, the workshops, but any updates or instructions you need to give us on that?
That is just provided for your advice information, if there's something you'd like to attend.
When would you need responses from planning commission members, if they're going to attend?
In a week.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, you know, it is in our bylaws for the planning commission that we try to keep up on educational opportunities as they come along to us. So, I encourage everybody to find a date that you could attend all of these trainings. Are you going to be teaching them?
I'm not sure yet. They haven't indicated yet. I'm on the board of directors, and how so, I'm not sure. Let's just look at that. The other thing too, is we all, as we, in addition to that, we, in the past, you know, we had many training sessions, so it seems like it'd be a good time to do that, especially when you're a new member. Maybe we're in a mini training session here.
I think it's a good idea.
I strongly encourage, it's the best gap I've had in weeks.
Tough crowd.
Maybe when we, the next couple of months, if we have like a lighter agenda, maybe we can put Mr. Anderson on there for some training. All right, so if you can get to that training, please let Rebecca know as soon as possible so that she can make arrangements there. All right, staff members, Mr. Womack?
Michael, welcome, Mr. Hendricks, planning commission. I think she's making a good addition. I'm always happy when I get to come to these meetings. I think you guys make wise decisions, ask important questions. And I think you're a very deliberate body, and I appreciate that. Other than that, always happy to answer questions you guys have with me. I've always got an open door policy, anytime you guys want to stop by and chat. And I'll see you guys in a month.
All right, more questions? Planning commission members, any comments?
Welcome, Sarah.
We, a few of us went to Big B's today. And looking good, but I think they're still having trouble with Jet's Pizza with the parking. He said now they're pulling into the grass. But I mean, at the end there, there's like three spots it could be in. It's not that far from their door. But he said he's talked to them and he said, well, they're, you know, they're like pickups or whatever, because like they pulled there to do a pickup or whatever. It shouldn't be a problem. Well, I don't know why the owner of the Jet's Pizza's owner of the mall. And he know, he knew, because if we were going to make a right in that, it was going to cost him money, so I don't understand why he's not following that.
And I guess the city manager will stop by and check things out and have a discussion with the answer.
So, but it's very nice. And it's still, I mean, there's still room if they park in the grass, but like not for a fire truck if you're in the way.
It's not an ideal situation.
Right. But it was very nice there.
Well, I'd like to thank you for trusting me to share this again. I'm grateful, do my best to serve you well. Jerry, Terry, which one of you wants to do the city council update?
Jerry, sir.
May I?
I'll pay you. I want to thank all the members that were reappointed tonight, board serving. This is a very important board and very powerful vote from the community. And it takes a lot of kind of effort, and I appreciate that a lot. It's my duty to be selecting people to be reappointed because of the experience they can bring them that they have. And also congratulate Mr. Owens for being the chairperson when you select to be invited. I won't see you guys next month. I will be at the planning commission meeting in South Florida.
Okay. You expect us to believe that?
What are you claiming is the question.
Fellsmere. We're going down there for a month and a half. I'll be going to their council meeting too. My brother-in-law is involved with a lily care of the city down there. It's about 35 miles east of Kokopilin. The hill is the largest producer of superfood. They're orange road baller. And they have, they have lilies about the size of Sand Lake with an operating budget of about $12 million. They have, I think you said, 45 square miles of the city of Fellsmere. Years ago, a lot of the growers down there, they were in the township, and the township zoning ordinance they didn't like. So, they wanted to subdivide them off, so they all voted to be part of the lilies or the city of Fellsmere. So, now they can subdivide, probably develop. On the hill.
Are they looking for the village manager? Get away from this night, guys.
They have, the guy they have there now is really good, and I asked him that same question. And we are searching. I thank everyone along here. Thank you for your kind.
If you bring some warm weather back with you.
And grapefruit. Yeah, very much.
Mr. Anderson, anything else for us?
Just welcome, etc., and everybody, what you said, a happy day here.
These planning and zoning essentials classes, is that something that you could teach here? I don't mean a mini, I mean a regular planning and zoning essentials class.
Yeah, that one, definitely. Some of the other classes would probably be more beneficial, like just specific ones. If there's one site plan review, it's probably pretty good. Not that we can't do any of, you know, all of them, but if you took one of the specialized ones, it would probably be more helpful. Because some of the other stuff, people have either heard before, or it would be a little rough. Something a class with such plans review would be very helpful.
It would, as long as it's not like the one I went to. They didn't, you couldn't even see this, when they took the copies, it wasn't even clear on the papers they gave them. And you couldn't even see the site plan to try and review it. And that was a while ago, but still.
I can ask them to find out, I can find out what materials they use, if they've changed it. What they should be doing is pulling out actual site plans. They've heard, you know, the full sheets, the, you know, the quantity to look at.
That's something I'd like to have more information on.
Yeah, I can ask, I can, I'll be talking to Andrea Brown, who's at the factory in the next three weeks if I order some stuff.
Do they have one here, March 15th in Waterford, Open County?
Yeah, that's right. That's like, I don't know, it's like east apartment, just east apartment. Light light and then the water purges.
Oh, that sounds like it.
Up and up 59.
All good.
Most of them are though.
Oh, that's like two and a half, that's like two and a half.
Trevor City is two hours.
Making an hour and one's not exactly close.
That's a weekend conference.
Does the city pay for a motel too, or just a class?
Oh, capers, huh?
Hey, there's a nice little park there, you can probably, it's a mile and a half.
So, you have a mile or two, so many miles, they'll pay for a motel, but it's not here. Is that the limit?
It's tight, I know.
All right, well, we'll figure out how we can do training, that'll be good news. Motion adjourned?
Aye.
Dale.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Thank you, we are adjourned.